I'll call to order the Monday, April 4th, 2022 Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting to order at 6:08. All councilors are present with the exception of Counselor McBride. Onto new business. On our schedule today, we have voter registration, Groton Public Library, Borrow It CT and Public Safety.
And Town Clerk.
Right. And, and just a reminder that, uh, um, councilors can make a motion to reconsider the Town Clerk budget, um, at any time if they wish to do so.
I'll make a motion to move to reconsider the vote on the Town Clerk budget, 10:05 from March 30, 2020, to in order to include a salary increase.
Second.
Second. Board along.
So moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville?
Well, then probably a, a number on the table then. You want to throw that number on?
Well, um, should we vote first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. You should wait for the vote. Sorry. Got ahead of myself.
Um, all right. Any discussion on the reconsideration? Okay. Seeing none. Oh, Counselor Bordelon?
Yes, I'd just like for you guys to reiterate what the, um, current salary is. There was question at the last meeting regarding the fact that there was a two-year wait of sorts. If we could just speak to that before going into this because that was the explanation given as to why there was a wait. So I just want to understand where we're at and, uh, what it actually states to do such. Thank you.
It should be first reconsidered, then we talk about it once you put it.
Right, yeah. So this is really just, uh, discussing whether or not we should reconsider and not actually the details of the, of the line item.
My question is, the, the thing that was brought up was, are we allowed to reconsider? So that's my first question.
No.
Before we reconsider.
We are absolutely allowed to reconsider.
It was stated in the last meeting that we could not reconsider, so that's my question.
No, we are allowed to reconsider the Town Clerk budget, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Point of clarification?
What's your point of clarification?
Um, there was some talk just now about, um, a proposed number. Are we allowed?
First, you have to vote whether to, you have to vote to reconsider it so that you can even talk about the budget.
Right.
Okay, I'll save my.
Okay.
I threw everybody off with my jumping.
That's okay. Okay. Um, so we will vote on the motion to reconsider. Counselor Bordelon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Not here.
Oh, he's not here. Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
And Melendez is a yes. That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, so we are on to the Town Clerk budget, which can be found on page 57.
I'll move to set the Town Clerk's budget at $349,021. So move.
That was three, four, nine.
What was it? Zero, two.
Zero, two, one.
Casiri, second.
Okay, so that's moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Casiri. And that's account 1005. Okay, discussion? Would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, yes. To answer, um, Counselor Bordelon's initial question, or what I believe to be her question regarding, uh, Clerk McCauser's salary, uh, the approved salary was $69,000. Um, and we will be upping that amount. Um, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Burt, to the equivalent of a 2.5% increase?
To 2%, because that's what was given in the current budget.
Okay.
And, and then if I could add on a little more.
Absolutely.
Background. And just so, uh, if you look at the state constitution, Article 14, Section 2, uh, part of it, in part, it in part reads, "The compensation of an elected official of a political subdivision of the state, whose term of office is four years or more, may be increased once," it's only one time, "once after such official has completed two years of the term, uh, by the legislative body of such political subdivision." Um, so in four years, you can only do it one time and they have to have completed two years, and this has been reviewed by the attorneys. Now, the new term, now, this six, uh, 70,003.80 was set in the existing current budget, and it was set when she was eligible for a raise in the second half of her, of her term. Um, there was some email traffic I sent out between her and the mayor, and, uh, nothing ever developed from there on how they wanted to handle things. Uh, we're now in the next term, however, we treat, I, I talked to our attorneys, they treat it like we basically didn't turn in the paperwork when something is approved, like, like you get someone to raise, you just fill out, hey, push this through. Said it's not an issue of, you know, to push this amount, we can't do it a different amount because this is what was set by the council at the time. But the clerk will be eligible again in January of '24 because that'll be entering the second half of the current term, and I highly suggest, you know, the council come up with some sort of, you know, permanent policy on how to handle. Because, you know, what, you know, an equivalent of a one-year raise in four years, you know, is certainly not fair, so you want to give some good thought before then to what's a fair process.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this entitle the clerk to back pay?
Yes, it would go back to, from when the budget was passed, effective Jan-, uh, July 1st of '21.
Okay, would that be considered in this budget?
No, because this is for the next budget. It'll be worked in if, if need be, we're about to do a fourth quarter transfer, so if we have to, it'll just, for the back pay.
Okay, thank you.
I think they've, they've had, um, at least one vacancy, those, they can probably handle it in their current budget.
I'm not seeing any other discussion, so I'll call for vote on account 1005, the amount of $349,021. Counselor Bordelon?
This is voting for the 3%. Is that correct?
2%.
2%.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
And Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
And just to add on, that's, um, also how it works for the registrars, they're also on the four-year, but they're off two years, so they are eligible right now for a raise because they're in the second half of their four-year term.
Okay. Thank you. So on to voter registration, account 1003, can be found on page 54.
I'll move $213,435.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Parker. The amount is $213,435. Account 1003. And we have our registrar voters here. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I can just give you a little bit of background on that number, where it came from, um, because it is more than last year, um, but we also had to ask for a fourth quarter transfer because we had a, a primary in last year's budget. So next year, or this coming year, um, there most likely will be a primary, um, and then, so I budgeted for a primary, and then I budgeted for the November election. Uh, it's also been 10 years since we've redistrict, so the state came down with their redistricting information, and we have to notify all voters of their voting residence, so that increase is in here as well, under postage and printing, um, for the postcards and the postage to go out to all the voters. We have about 21,000 voters registered. That doesn't include inactives, this would only be the active voters that we have to send it out to. Um, we also, um, obviously upped the office supplies, like I said, kind of, I didn't say specifically. Um, and then, um, the tabulator maintenance company that the state hires to do our tabulator maintenance, we have a contract with them, they increased their budget from, um, I mean, their charge from 3,600 to 4,800. Um, in their defense, they have never raised their cost in the time that I've been a registrar And then also, um, an increase in the registrar's pay. What I did was I, I figured out how many hours we actually put in because there's always been a question about how much we get paid, it seems like a lot of money. So I went through and I tracked the hours that we put in, and I divided that out by the money, and we were getting paid $12.70 an hour. So I proposed an increase to bring us up to $15 an hour. And that, as, um, Town Manager Burt said, will not take effect until January of '23, so it'll be in the middle of the year.
It'll actually be July 1st.
Oh, it will?
Yes, because we're, uh, you're eligible right now, and this budget takes effect on, on July 1st, so unless they say otherwise, it will be July 1st.
Oh, okay. Sorry, the last I had heard was January.
See, what happened a lot of times is they did it outside of the budget process, right before January, when you knew the term was about to hit that second half, that's why it was off to January.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There's no requirement for it, though.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, I'm seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on account 1003, in the amount of $213,435. Counselor Bordelon? All right, I'll come, I'll circle back. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
Melendez is a yes. Counselor Bordelon, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
On to Groton Public Library, 1063, can be found on page 140.
Move the amount of $1,685,970.
Casiri, second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Casiri. $1,685,970, uh, account 1063. And we have Director Mealy here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jennifer Mealy, I'm the Director of Groton Public Library, and with me tonight I have Michael Spellman, Assistant Director. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to briefly say a few words before we get into the budget. Over the last year, the library has been slowly emerging out of the pandemic, as you know. Uh, members of the community are feeling safer inside the building and using many more of our services. Our meeting rooms and spaces are busy, passport activity has increased, in-person programs and children's storytimes are very well attended, and tech help, printing and copying are in full swing. As always, GMTV is in high demand. Um, staff is quickly and readily transitioning back to the vibrant, active library of pre-COVID. Um, we base this year's budget on this, on this time of transition by keeping operations level and basing our increase solely on contractual raises and minimum wage adjustments for part-time staff. As demand grows for services in the next year, as we expect it will, we would like to continue to not only meet the needs of the Groton community, but exceed their expectations. Thank you for your time and consideration, and Michael and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello.
Hi.
Um, just wanted to inquire as to why your operating expenses are down this year.
Um, one, uh, reason is because we, uh, have realized a, with our copier, um, we are transitioning in our, um, contracts, and our contract, our new contract is going to be decreased by about a, I believe, $1,000 or so. So we, we do look for every, you know, look under every stone to make sure that we're operating appropriately and, um, you know, seeing any savings that we can find.
Great. And any of the personnel services is simply contractual raises or minimum wage raise?
Correct.
There is no addition of any staff?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, so I'll call for vote on account 1063, in the amount of $1,685,970. Counselor Bordelon?
Aye.
Hello.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
Melendez is a yes. Counselor Bordelon, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto Groton Public Library, 1063, can be found on page 140.
Move the amount of $1,685,970.
Casiri, second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Casiri. $1,685,970, uh, account 1063. And we have Director Mealy here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jennifer Mealy, I'm the Director of Groton Public Library, and with me tonight I have Michael Spellman, Assistant Director. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to briefly say a few words before we get into the budget. Um, over the last year, the library has been slowly emerging out of the pandemic, as you know. Uh, members of the community are feeling safer inside the building and using many more of our services. Our meeting rooms and spaces are busy, passport activity has increased, in-person programs and children's storytimes are very well attended, and tech help, printing and copying are in full swing. As always, GMTV is in high demand. Um, staff is quickly and readily transitioning back to the vibrant, active library of pre-COVID. Um, we base this year's budget on this, on this time of transition by keeping operations level and basing our increase solely on contractual raises and minimum wage adjustments for part-time staff. As demand grows for services in the next year, as we expect it will, we would like to continue to not only meet the needs of the Groton community, but exceed their expectations. Thank you for your time and consideration, and Michael and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello.
Hi.
Um, just wanted to inquire as to why your operating expenses are down this year.
Um, one, uh, reason is because we, uh, have realized a, with our copier, um, we are transitioning in our, um, contracts, and our contract, our new contract is going to be decreased by about a, I believe, $1,000 or so. So we, we do look for every, you know, look under every stone to make sure that we're operating appropriately and, um, you know, seeing any savings that we can find.
Great. And any of the personnel services is simply contractual raises or minimum wage raise?
Correct.
There is no addition of any staff?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, so I'll call for vote on account 1063, in the amount of $1,685,970. Counselor Bordelon?
Aye.
Hello.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
And Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. All right, on to Borrow It, CT 3310.
I make a motion for $20,050.
Second.
Can be found on page 145. Um, so I have a motion, it should be $20,000? Okay.
Oh, $20,000, oh, sorry. I apologize, I'll rescind that. I make a motion for $20,000.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner. Uh, account 3310, the amount of $20,000. Director Mealy?
So, um, Borrow It CT, for those who don't know, is a state cooperative program, so it allows people to take their library cards and be able to borrow materials from any library in the state of Connecticut. Um, we receive reimbursement, um, for these loans that we give out to the, throughout the state. Um, so this year, with the $20,000, we're looking to, um, continue to upgrade our wireless hubs, and also, this particular year, we were having a, uh, I believe it was the fifth year of a CIP, that we were going to have two servers, ask for two servers and a CIP, and we instead were going to be utilizing this money to, um, acquire those servers. So, that's.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for vote on account 3310, in the amount of $20,000. Counselor Bordelon?
Aye.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
And Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to Public Safety, 1024, can be found on page 99.
I'll make a motion for $9,522,800.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Parker, account 1024, in the amount of $9,522,800. And we have Chief Asaro here to speak to his budget.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not there with you, my plan was to be there, but unfortunately, I can't be tonight. Um, so our, our budget, uh, I'll bring the highlights to your attention, uh, it's pretty consistent, there's an overall increase of about 2.8%. Um, in the personal services cost, it is primarily due to, uh, pay increases, contractually obligated pay increases. Um, but to back up for a little bit, for those who aren't familiar, and I, I know several of you were able to attend a tour of the facility a couple of, uh, about a month ago, um, the police, the public safety department is the police department and the dispatch center, uh, as well as emergency management and animal control. Those are the major subfunctions of it, so this covers that entire budget. Um, the primary increase in our operational budget is attributed in large part, uh, to the increase in costs resulting from, uh, the Police Accountability Bill, which mandated not just body worn cameras, but also in-car cameras. Uh, we've entered into a contract with Axon for the in-car cameras, which was, uh, new to us this year, but as you're probably aware, since 2017, our department has had, uh, body worn cameras in place for all of our officers, from, uh, the newest officer up to myself. Uh, in 2017, we took advantage of a grant that was provided by the state of Connecticut, uh, that made most of the initial outlay, uh, financial outlay to, to field those, put the burden on the state of Connecticut, they reimbursed the town for those costs. For the years since then, it's been about $38,000 a year that it cost us for just the body worn cameras, that was the maintenance cost. Uh, that is going to increase to roughly about $150,000 with, uh, with, uh, the next contract. So 2017, we entered into a five-year contract that has since expired, uh, that grant is no longer available. Uh, funding for this, uh, that we took advantage of a number of years ago just doesn't exist anymore. Um, for municipalities that did not take advantage of it, there are some, um, monies available, but that just isn't, isn't available to us. So the, the, the primary increase in our budget comes on the operational side, which again is, is $146,340. That is the cost annually that we're going to have to pay for the next five years for our body worn camera program. Separate and apart from that are the, are the, um, in-car cameras, I, I know he's on the line here, I do want to give a, a shout out to Captain B, he did a lot of work, uh, trying to get that number down, and he did get it down significantly, uh, from our vendor because we've been customers and he was able to, uh, leverage, uh, that fact and the fact that we've helped other, um, police agencies in Connecticut field their body worn camera programs as well. So we, we took advantage of some savings there. So, I, I would also like to point out, although I know you're not discussing these tonight, but, but the capital improvement projects, the big, the big one for us, again, it's in part of the, um, uh, Public Works budget, but it's about our, our rehab of our, uh, our men's locker room, and I hope, uh, I hope when you consider that, that you look upon that favorably. Uh, those are the primary budget increases. Um, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I actually have a question, um, for you, Chief. The, uh, I'm looking on your, on page 104, and.
Yep.
Under social worker one, uh, we approved one last year, and it's at zero now?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Uh, there, there's no social worker, um, in the budget, included, it's at zero.
It, it is in the budget, I, it's under the community policing function, um, I don't know why that was in a different, identified differently, I'm not really sure why that has no number, but it is included in our budget proposal, so the, the funding for that is included in this, but I don't know why it didn't make it onto that.
Point of information.
Okay. All right. What's your point of information?
It's represented as a community outreach specialist.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. Any other questions?
There it is. Thanks, thanks, Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
Uh, good to see you, Chief. Um, just.
Good to see you.
A quick question, um, regarding, uh, animal control. Um, where, the operating budget for animal control, uh, is that cost center, uh, so it's about 170,000, and then, um, for personnel, it's about, uh, about a little less than 150,000? And my question is, is, um, does animal control fall under the, or the personnel for animal control fall under that cost center?
It does. Excuse me, um, you're looking at 10249?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's, uh, the, so the personnel costs on that are, uh, the two animal control officers, which are, um, because of a collective bargain change, they are both, although there's only one identified as the animal control officer, the assistant animal control officer that was, uh, was brought onto the same pay scale.
So the operating costs are roughly 20,000?
Roughly.
I always thought it'd be more.
Just to point out, they get tons of donations, like all the food and everything is all donated.
Wow. Excellent. And, um, my other question, um, the body worn cameras, would, uh, which cost center would it fall under?
That is in our operating budget, that is under 10, uh, 10, uh, I'm sorry, 5220. So if you look at that, you'll see that's a sizable increase, it went from last year of 155,000, uh, to that, uh, over 300,000 this year.
And then, um, the two other questions, one is overtime, there's about, like, uh, believe, a hundred thousand, roughly 100,000, uh, a little less than 100,000 increase. Um, is that just attributable to, um, certain positions being unfilled?
I'm sorry, which line are you looking at?
Um, 5104.
Overtime includes both, uh, so there's two different overtimes, just to identify the difference, uh, you got 5104 and 5107. Overtime pay in 5104 would be if an officer, uh, for instance, makes an arrest and, um, or is held over at the end of their shift for some reason, uh, extra, uh, they have to do reports, or there's, uh, have to take someone to court, something of that nature, that falls into that overtime. 5107, and that also includes our dispatchers. 5107 is, uh, shift replacement, so if an individual is on vacation or calls in sick or is at training, we use this, uh, shift replacement, so those are two different categories, and it covers both police, uh, police, animal control, and dispatch.
Uh, and my, uh, last question is a community policing increase.
vacant, definitely, does that contribute to that overtime level?
It absolutely does. And what it also brings to your attention is the officers that are in the academy contribute to that because while they're employees and they're being trained to be police officers, they're in the academy and don't have, as I described in the past, they are more of liability than an asset until they become.
Fully trained and completely FPO program. So those additional officers that are in the academy, yeah, they're part of the department, they're getting paid, they're great resources to us and assets for the future, but right now, really, all they're doing is working as academy recruits.
So it sort of looks like we have 10% or more shortage, shortfall in our, in the staff?
You know, that's true. And I don't know whether it was last year or, you know, when police accountability started, we did not, we were pretty much fully staffed in 2020. May 1st of 2020, we had 100% staffing in the police department. We had a shortage in the, or two shortages in the dispatch center. Since that time, a lot of people have retired. We've had officers resign. We've aggressively recruited and we continue to recruit. Well, we're competing with all of our neighbors for the best candidates out there, so all the other police departments in southeastern Connecticut are competing for the same potential officers as us. So we're trying to, we're trying to get our staffing to where it needs to be, but, you know, to be quite frank, it's been a little bit of a difficult task, but we have found some good officers that we've been able to hire in the last year and a half.
Do you have a sense of how much extra time our officers work because of the shortfall that we have? I mean, is it 100% of the time they're supposed to be working, are they working 130% or something?
You know, I can't give you a good guess on that, other than I could say is we're ordering people in all the time. You know, that's, we need to staff patrols, we need to make sure that the officers, you know, we try to provide them as much time as we can when they earn their time off to be able to use it, but when we're short, because we don't have enough officers on a given shift, it usually means that someone from the previous shift is held over for four hours and someone from the next shift is called in for four hours. So, yeah, I would say our officers, on average, some more than less, but they're, you know, they're well over that 100%, you know, 120, 130%, I think you'd say, but there's officers that, the last, you know, the last couple of years, because of shortages, have been working a lot. We've tried to be creative, we've tried to utilize what we have to make it most efficient. You know, at times when, we try not to run short just because of officer safety reasons, but sometimes we may be forced to do that in certain circumstances, but we don't make it happen.
Is there anything that you see is, prevents us from hiring new officers that's getting the way, or, you know, that's in our town?
Yeah. The town of Groton is in no different situation than any other police department in Connecticut or nationwide. There's been a dramatic change in the last couple of years with people wanting to come into this profession. There's, you know, there's a lot of stressors, there were stressors before this, but there's a lot more. There's, you know, there's a reluctance on certain individuals wanting to get into police work because of the exposure they have to lawsuits, which has always existed, but maybe has changed in the last couple of years. There's difficulty in getting people that come right out of college that want to pursue a law enforcement career. I think, I think the youth today have watched what's been transpiring in the last several years and kind of taken pause to decide what they want to do with the future. So we're not dealing with anything that nobody else is dealing with. We talk about this at chief's meetings. We've talked about it with our regional law enforcement council, which we're a part of. We're all experiencing the same challenges. We have the same hardships where we're holding people over and we're ordering them in on shifts. And my hope that, that trend is starting to discontinue, and I'm hoping that people are now more attracted to the position than they were maybe a year or two ago. But, but on the flip side, you know, we have seen many officers leave. Those that were eligible that may have stuck around for a year or two more have decided to retire and others have left the profession altogether prior to retirement. So I think it's, I think it's what we're seeing in society as a whole right now. And it's not just police, pandemic has played a role in it too.
And just one final question. Our overtime pay and our sick time pay are well over 10% of the police budget. Is there a number in the ideal police department budget that you would like to have that number at if we were able to get up to full staff?
Yeah, I think you'd see that decrease considerably. You know, when we're not at full staffing, then that means that those positions, when anybody calls in sick, we're filling it with overtime. When someone takes a vacation, we're filling it in overtime. Ideally, we would have the schedule structured so that we could absorb a couple of people per shift that were absent for one reason or another, training, vacation time, sick time, various other leaves, you know, where that, there's always going to be overtime. There's always going to be the need to send people to training when they're off duty. You know, now, we also need to send them for psychological testing and for drug testing, and some of which incurs a little bit of overtime, not a huge amount. But, but were we to be fully staffed, we would, you know, they're inversely proportional, you would see that, you know, that go down considerably.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, Councilor Bordelone?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. The numbers here and the increases where you're up in operating costs, $197,000. We're, you know, like every department, is our job is to look and see where we can look for cost savings. It's not necessarily that we're trying to defund or not fund it at 100%, but the axing number that's coming in, sometimes it's important to look at where we can actually save a little bit, but also give an increase. Is there any areas here that you see possible savings where, you know, you could do without? Thank you.
I get asked this question every year. We try to submit a budget that we think is fair, that, you know, it's 2.8% increase, I think, when we look across the board in society today, you know, particularly this year with inflation, it's not a huge amount. So I submit a budget that I think is reasonable. I don't, I don't build in factors to say, okay, we need to cut here, that's, that would, I think you want me to present you with a budget that gets the mission accomplished that you're, you're looking to achieve, and that's what I've provided here. So if you're asking, where would I cut, I wouldn't.
Manager Burr?
Just to point out that we have budget meetings in advance with Cindy, Lori, or Arne Chanel, that she's here, and we submit questions on all their equipment, like, you know, we've gone through specs on these cameras and all that. So we actually do a lot of legwork behind the scenes on making sure nothing extras in there.
Thank you.
And I'll also point out, there is a salary adjustment included in this as well, which is commonplace. Every year, we have about, we have a sizable salary adjustment that the town manager incorporates into it as well as part of this budget.
Councilor Bordelone, you have the floor?
Thanks. So looking at this, it says 2.8% and it's broken out, broken out in personal services as well as operating expenses. Those salary adjustments would fall under which category?
Personnel services.
Great. So that personnel services, it says, an increase of $65,000 roughly, and under operating expenses up, but roughly $197,000. So I was looking at the operating, not touching the personnel services adjustments. Looking to see there, you know, everybody wants to come at their ask, but it's important to look and see, you know, definitely not flatlining it, but, you know, looking to give an appropriate increase where needed, and every department wants an increase, and every department is well deserving of wonderful staff, wonderful time, people working overtime in everything, even the ambulance came to us and spoke to that. So I can appreciate that. I understand the work that's being done, but, you know, again, the community will ask me, where, where can we cut that $197,000 a little bit?
Sure.
If that number was moved to a number where maybe we brought it down, that operating expense down to 100,000 and knocked down to 97,000, and we still appropriate the money to the personal services for 65,000, I mean, how could we move forward? I mean, I think every budget in every town and every, everybody wants to get what they come in for. Everybody wants their raise, as do I.
I think the big difference is.
I'm just going to finish the number. That's okay. The number, I might be lagging. We're both, it looks like we're virtual tonight, so I apologize. The number is important and I want to fund it and fund the extras, but I think it's important to see that we might not be able to give everybody exactly what they ask. And so that's important to ask you where you think you could fall.
Yeah, I think the big difference between us and everybody else, and I hate to differentiate, but there was a sizable price tag with some things that we've been required to do over the last two years, and you're seeing that in our budget, and that's in the operating budget. We don't have an option anymore. You know, in 2017, body cameras were nice to have. I moved forward on that because I thought it was the right thing to do, even though it was a real popular decision. Now it's a mandate. In-car videos are a mandate. Testing of our officers for controlled substances is a mandate. The psychological testing is a mandate. Use of force training is a mandate. We are now training our officers more and, you know, that does get into the personal services stuff. But all these other things that were put onto our plate are no longer optional, and I would submit that many of those can be categorized as unfunded mandates. I said that to my colleagues in meetings, I've mentioned it in our chief's association. That's kind of the position that we've taken as a group when it came to a lot of things. Kalia is a mandate. There's a huge price tag associated with that. So all of these things, I appreciate that, you know, we want to have lean budgets, we want to, we want to be careful stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, but these are not optional programs that we've put in here. There are things that we're required to do, again, not optional. I do know that, you know, this town has been very supportive of the department, making sure that they get the best out of their policing agency and that their officers are held to high standards. We're going to continue that. And, you know, are there dollars attached to it? Yes. Yes, there are. So I, you know, were we to cut it, I think we would have a problem fielding those programs that we're not required to. And I don't see that trending in the, in the reverse, right? I don't see that, I don't, I don't see that percentage decreasing on the operating side because now we're, we have higher requirements, we have more requirements, and a lot of that has been put on the cities and towns to pay for, and I keep trying to be as blunt as I can on that, you know, there's, there are, and many of these things I think we should have, right? I think there are a lot of things that are good programs. You know, as I said, the body worn cameras, that shows our officers doing the right thing, that looks out for them when they're out in the field and they're encountering issues that may end up being problematic in the future, make sure that they've done things the right way, allows us to hold officers accountable, but more importantly, it shows us the great work that our officers do every day. So again, I provided you the budget that I think allows us to do our mission, but the operating budget, yeah, went up a lot, but that's because we are now fielding both in-car cameras and body worn cameras, and there was a savings realized over the last five years with our body worn cameras, but now that's, that's passed, and whereas it was a nice to have then, it's now it's a necessity and a mandate.
Thank you. So when I look at this budget also as well, it's gone up over a million dollars over the last several years, and, you know, other departments want, everyone says, treat every department the same and make sure we look at those numbers, and a million dollar increase over the last several years is a huge thing to take on. And so I'd like to move another number. I'd like to move $9,322,860.
I'm not seeing a second.
Can I just say one thing?
Manager Burr?
The reason it increases, and maybe some, some people are here, maybe not, we, dispatch was a separate thing, a separate department. It was merged a few years ago. That's why it went up that much.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
It's just important to note, and fine, I don't have the second, that was still going to be an increase of several thousand dollars, but I think it's important, you know, once again, looking at every department, I have to treat everybody equally and, you know, cuts were proposed, and if there's not a second on that, that's fine, but I think it's important that, you know, every year we come forward, there's been, you know, there are literally over a million dollars that's been kind of increasing steadily over time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Chief. I'm seeing that with the operating expense being at $197,808, $150,000 of that is for body cams. So your operating increase is about $47,000, and I know from just my experience that Kalia is about $10,000 to $12,000. Is that correct, Chief?
Did we lose it?
Nope. Internet, internet's having an issue. It's trying to connect.
Stop my timer, please.
You scared the internet.
Okay.
So we've just lost connection with, with our Zoom chat, so we're just working, getting back on.
You killed the internet.
Recording in progress.
Just that.
Welcome back. We get lost, you guys, so we're back.
Oh, there we go.
Councilor Casieri, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Chief, I was talking about your $197,000 operating budget. $150,000 of that is for body cams, so that leaves you with $47,000 increase. Kalia alone is about $10,000 to $12,000. Is that correct, Chief?
Yeah, the initial outlay is, and there's an annual fee, I want to say it's about five to seven a year, and that does not account for a lot of the other ancillary tasks. For instance, last week, I had to send Deputy Chief Gately and Lieutenant Minor to Orlando, Florida for their conference to do the initial stuff. You know, that's, that's cost that we just absorbed out of our budget. That isn't even, that isn't even shown as being in a separate line item. So, yeah, that's fair to say, there's a lot of costs that go along with Kalia.
Right. And so that leaves you with about $37,000 increase in your operating budget, which you have to pay for mental health testing now for all of your officers, including yourself, drug testing, and extra use of force training, correct?
That's correct. And it also incorporates, you know, increases in things like fuel. We also, as part of the dispatch centers, the town manager pointed out, you know, a couple of years ago, we assumed all the responsibilities for that. There's a lot of pieces and parts to the dispatch center into our remote sites that service, the fire service that we budget for, that has gone up because, you know, the, without getting into the weeds of what those things are, but there's things like digitizers that send fire alerts to the police station and then we dispatch from that. There's radio sites which have to be maintained every year. That's incorporated in our operating budget. We've recently had to buy some additional mobile data terminals. We bought those out of our budget. Ordinarily, they come out of Brian Hancock's budget, but because they were stuff that we needed, he didn't have it, we ended up buying it because we needed it right away for some vehicles and a bunch of other things that go along with that. So those are all parts of this, parts of the figure that you just asked about.
Great. So is it fair to say that the majority of your operating expenses are unfunded mandates?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, in the last couple of years, for sure, the increases are.
So any type of cut in your budget, budget would go into personnel services?
More than likely.
Okay. So.
Well, we still have to do those things, so those are, those are mandates, those aren't options.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So Counselor Jones was getting into this a little bit before, but I just wanted to touch on when you cut into personnel. So in public safety, when you attempt to cut positions, you're only adding an increase in overtime. You are also elevating the burnout rate for our officers. I worked for a department that could not adequately fill shifts, which means officers were held for another shift without a choice, and I worked for a department where I was getting ordered in sometimes three, three times a week. And when we are doing that to our officers, they get to a point when they need a break. And so you lower the order in rate, you're going to lower the sick time rate as well. These are not just normal come into your office and sit for eight hour shifts. These are now 12 to 16 hours of shootings, stabbings, mental health crises, and car accidents, assaults, and trauma. So I would urge counselors to please support the full amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I comment on one of those, Counselor Casieri?
Sure.
So, so I had the privilege a couple of weeks ago of attending something with Officer McClellan that was strictly about officer wellness, and the very issues that you're bringing up were all pertinent. You know, the toll that policing takes on people, and yet, not. people, and yet, not every day is filled with horror, right? Some days are, we don't use the term routine, but there are days that are somewhat monotonous, with spikes of really stressful and, and sometimes, you know, very disheartening events that take place in, in, in society, and our officers have a front row seat to all that. And when it's coupled with inability to get time off, and all those other stressors that they see on their day-to-day jobs, that it does have a, it does have an impact, and, you know, what doesn't, what doesn't seem to be making it in the, the news media that much, we've seen officers that are being assaulted, killed, and, and dying in the line of duty at a higher rate in the last two years than anywhere in recent history, but what it doesn't tell the tale is all those officers that either during their career or after their career. And that's one of those things that we're trying to change, that's why having our community policing program, or more importantly, our officer wellness program is so important to me, to make sure that we take care of our officers from the time they pin on the badge, to the time they, you know, get a handshake and a slap on the back and a proclamation saying, thanks for your job, well done, enjoy your retirement. We want to make sure that we keep our officers healthy, and I think in recent years, we've recognized that. But what you've pointed out there is extremely important in that, when we're ordering them in, there's never that time to decompress, and, you know, we've looked at strategies to allow our officers additional time off when we can, but when we're burning the candle at both ends, it has a price. So thanks for pointing that out, and yes, it does, you know, we, I want my, I want our officers to have their time off that they earn, I want them to spend, spend quality time with their families and friends, and do things that they enjoy, and have healthy habits, but when we're saying, hey, yeah, you were going to go to the gym after work, but now you're going to stay here for another four or eight hours and fill another shift, and I know you didn't bring food, so hit McDonald's over there and grab some, you know, some fast food that really you don't want to be eating on a regular basis, certainly, and those, those all have, they take a toll over time, so just obligated to point that out, but thank you for, for bringing it up.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for keeping your budget so minimal with all of your unfunded mandates.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Oh, no. Chief Fazaro answered. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I have no other hands. So I'll call for a vote on account one zero two four, in the amount of nine million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, eighty-six dollars. Counselor Bordelon?
Abstained.
Counselor Baumgardner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westervelt?
Yes.
And Melendez is a yes, that carries seven favor, zero post, one abstention, Bordelon?
Thank you so much, counsel, for your support, I know our officers appreciate it.
Thank you.
And dispatchers.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
I have a, a question that I'd like to pose to the town manager.
Sure.
One second.
What's your point of information?
So I just, I have a concern, looking through our new mill rate and the budget and things, and just a concern about the effects of the revaluation on the residents and, and property taxes, and how it seems to not, property, the residential valuation went up, but the mill rate didn't proportionally drop. So I just want to make, have everybody aware of the, understanding the tax impact of what we're doing to our residents, and just to get some information on what was the average valuation on the residential homes in Groton and the tax increase, mean or average, whatever number is the one that works for that, on houses in Groton for both dollars and percent. And just doing an example on my own house, on the revaluation of my own house, the valuation went up forty-one percent on my house, and I've talked to some other residents who happened on theirs too, with that, with our proposed mill rate of twenty-two point four, that has an effective tax increase of twenty percent. So I know those numbers are going to move around, but just to kind of get an idea, we're, we're looking at the budget, making cuts or not making cuts, and doing things, but we don't have any number to bounce off, or we don't have a target that we're working off of, it's kind of loose, so my question is for Director Landry to kind of put together some numbers so that we can have a sense of what, where we, excuse me, where we are, because the proposed tax increase just seems excessively high, and we might, we need to know where to go with that, so.
Okay.
Did I ask that question correctly?
And just keep in mind that the vast majority of it is things not part of the, like, town proper budget, so keep that in mind, it's, you know, vast majority is outside, not, not, you know, CIPs, of course, but we're also using fund balance for that.
Right. And maybe we're going to add more fund balance or change things around, but just to have a, a number so we kind of know what we're working off of, because it's, you know, just looking at this and seeing how we can bring it down, it just seems, even dropping one mill rate is still going to make it high.
Cindy will work with the assessor and get that to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And we are recessed at seven oh four.